Good evening, I'm not sure, um, city clerk is the mayor.
The mayors have some connection issues right now, we're tempted for that at the moment.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody, and sorry for the delay. I don't know what's going on, my computer at the, at the office won't allow me to get on, so I'm on my cellphone for right now, but we'll be working through it. So again, welcome to another of the Easter's City Council Orientation Session. Um, the date is Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the time is now six ten P M. This gives us a chance for the council to go over the, to ask any questions of the administration, um, to discuss any agenda items that they may want to, um, have any more information on, or to look at removing from the agenda at this time. Uh, we're just gonna jump right into it, are there any questions as it relates to? Uh, we do have, um, a public hearing today, um, as it relates to the Cherry Hill Family Development Ordinance. Is there any questions on that? I know we'll be definitely going through a public hearing, but the discussion, but does anyone have any questions on that based off of last meeting or any information that they've gathered so far? You guys can hear me correct?
Yes.
Alright, perfect, alright then, item A, any questions? Hearing done, item B, any questions as regards to item B?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Councilman Shaw.
Uh, just, uh, if we can back up for one second, I couldn't get to you real fast, uh, I just have one question on the item A. Um, on page one, it talked about an annual service charge for public service in lieu of all property taxes. Can someone, can, can, can someone explain that, what, what, what does that entail?
Okay, let's see. And you said it's on page one?
Yeah, that's in the Cherry Hill Townhouse Family Pilot Ordinance.
Okay.
This is section two.
We do have a gentleman on from the Lark Group on, if we can unmute them, we can answer any questions directly. Good evening, do we have him unmuted?
Yes.
Yes, alright, perfect.
This is Mark C P L at Lark Group.
Hey, Mark.
Hi. Yeah, I think the, the question related to the service charge, um, and the service charge is equal to four percent of the difference between the annual contract rents elected by the project and the utilities. It's referred to as a net shelter rent. It's a standard calculation for this pilot under the authority of the state code that's listed in the top of the ordinance. Um, it is a charge to the project, he would, we pay that, that's essentially the payment calculation. So we pay that to the taxing. That's the calculation of the payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, okay, I, I was thinking of it was some kind of other service that was going to be provided, okay?
No, that, that's really our payment for city services, um, and it's a payment to the city and other taxing authorities.
Okay, so you said it's four percent for those who are, who are, again?
It is, we, the Lark Group is, you know, the development company on behalf of the owner of the property. The owner of the property is an affiliate of Lark Group, and the owner would pay that fee to the, of Inxter. In, in lieu of, instead of the, the normal cap tax calculation. That's essentially the amount of the, and so that's gonna change and it's gonna grow if and when the contract rents, this is a project-based Section eight property, one hundred percent affordable, restricted by HUD to low-income families. And the rents that we can charge are annually approved by HUD. And so that top line is essentially the, the beginning point on which, and the, the four percent calculation is. So if, if our rents were to go up, um, that would grant you, you know, the city would realize that's an proportional increase on a four percent calculation on the difference between those rents and the, the utilities, which are your, you know, their utilities that are on record. So the calculation is, is very clear because the rents are, uh, the rents are determined by HUD, and the utilities are determined by City of Inxter. So the, the difference there, four percent of that difference would be the payment in lieu of taxes. We pay as the owner to the various taxing authorities, including the city of Inxter.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, Mister.
Yep. Alright. Any other questions on this particular item?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yeah, just to clarify, this payment in lieu of taxes is only until twenty, um, was it? Explain twenty twenty-two the last time, because the, the whole idea was we were to get full tax is after this, this is not something that's going to continue for any great length of time, correct?
Let's have the Lark Group explain that to you, please. You guys can unmute.
I, I was just, uh, allowed to be unmuted, yes, so, just to be clear, the, there's two properties, technically two parcels. Um, one parcel is the senior property, which is a hundred and fifty units, one hundred percent Section eight, project-based. Um, it is senior restricted, sixty-two years and older, or disabled. That property will be the property that receives essentially the source for the full ad valorem taxes to the city and to other taxing authorities, that's the full ad valorem taxes, that's the full amount of the taxes that at the end of twenty twenty-two being referenced, uh, by Miss Watley. This ordn, this pilot ordinance ends to the family property, which is only thirty-six units. It's adjacent to the senior site, they were originally developed at the same time. Um, they're sister properties, but the family property is thirty-six units, and it is family restricted project Section eight. Um, and that's the property for which the pilot is being proposed. That's, so just, I, I don't, just to be clear, there are two separate properties with two separate solutions, the senior property would provide full ad valorem taxes the end of twenty twenty-two. The family property, we propose to pursue the four percent pilot under this ordinance. The combination of which would allow the rehabilitation, both projects to proceed.
And that, uh, that, um, uh, pilot is for how long, forever?
It is as long as section, the, section forty-two of the Internal Revenue Code is the, the section of the Internal Revenue Code that pertains to low-income housing, uh, tax credit development. That's, that's what we are, we are prepared to proceed with, when I refer to the rehabilitation project. I'm referring to section forty-two, low-income housing tax credit financed rehabilitation of both sites, which, hard cost perspective is approximately an average of forty-four thousand dollars per unit. That rehabilitation financing, um, the, the passing of this pilot would essentially allow us to proceed with that rehabilitation across both sides, a hundred and fifty units at senior and the, um, the thirty-six units at family. And so that financing typically has, it has an initial compliance period of fifteen years. And the Michigan State Housing Development Authority requires another fifteen-year extended use period to tack down on top of that. As long as section forty-two applies, then, so in theory with the pilot.
Okay, if I'm hearing you in, you know, lay terminology.
It'd be thirty, thirty years.
Thirty years, okay, so, um, and you mentioned that the, um, the four percent pilot would go up in increments. Um.
Would only go up if our, if our rents, typically what it allows is, uh, to keep up with us operating a property. There are, annually, the rents might go up one percent, one and a half. Uh, you know, or whatever the standard operating cost adjustment factor is. It varies year to year based on inflation.
So what we're looking at now with what we've been getting from you as a pilot would be what we would expect to get from you for that section for the next thirty years?
The pilot right now only pertains to the senior prop. I, it gets confusing, but the bottom, the senior property currently has a pilot. The family property currently pays full ad valorem taxes. What, but the combination of these two solutions would produce are three things. It would produce full ad valorem taxes on the bigger prop. On the hundred and fifty-unit senior property, you, city would then receive full ad valorem tax. There's a huge benefit there, a tax proceeds. However, on the pilot, family property, that is a, that would be a new pilot for the, the family property. Um, which would it would be, it would be the foremost, that's referenced. The net benefit, though, is considerable to the city, and we can go, I, we can pull up the, the, the number if you'd like, I don't, you do that. But the, the city ha- has had and still has our estimates for the net benefit to the city, um, and it's a considerable, annually, I believe it's over ninety thousand dollars additional tax proceeds, I'll have to pull it up myself. To the city, though.
Okay. Alright, Mister Mayor, this is going to be part of the public hearing, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so the public will have a chance to weigh in on this based on the information that he's given us right now, as far as one part being something and one part being something else, and this stays the same and that may go up and the benefits are considerable. I don't think they've had the opportunity to see the paperwork we've had, so can you like, make sure we're in depth when we're explaining this to them?
Yes, that's exactly why, that's why we brought it before you, before we had the public presentation. So we wanted to bring it before you, just as an introduction, that's why we did that last, uh, council meeting. Um, that way you can kind of wrap your brain around it a little bit as a council, and then we can present it to the public how we would normally do it as a councilmatic body. So this is the first public, um, reading, the first reading, and then of course we'll have a second reading before anything is act.
Okay, but just to be fair, I thought I was paying attention and I'm learning something different this time around, so, okay, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am, and we're gonna make sure that we pull all those things out to the best of our ability. Anyone else has anything on the?
Um, I have a question, um. In regards to the door rate, and where it states that the mortgage law re, um, that the mortgage loan for such housing project remains outstanding unpaid, um, or the authority or the U S and, um, has any interest still in the Cherry Hill Family Development, so is saying the ordinance should remain in effect and should not terminate as long as the mortgage loan for this housing, this housing project remains outstanding and unpaid, so is this regarding a family or a senior, or is both?
This ordinance is only for the family prop.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving into item A, any questions as it relates to new business, item A? Item B? Item C?
I'm sorry, Mister Mayor, I hadn't unmuted myself in time for item B.
Item B?
Yes, I had, I had just wanted to ask if, uh, anybody else had had an opportunity, because our last meeting, uh, myself and Councilwoman Wiley has submitted information for, um, the attorney to review and compose into the public comment piece. And then I know Councilman Shaw has spoke at the last meeting about his concerns, so I just wondered if the attorney had any other, uh, submissions, and was he able to incorporate all of those? And if so, um, has everybody opportunity to review what we have submitted? So we can make sure that we are voting on a complete document tonight, because we did table it at the last meeting.
Yeah, that would, and, 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 and I would actually, uh, I don't think it goes against Robert Rules of Order, if we table it again, just give it a body a chance to, um, collect all the information and then, uh, come back and put it on the agenda for action item. If that's something that we will look to do, because I don't, I don't think everybody got a chance to weigh in on it.
Okay, can Attorney Jones speak to this, too?
Yeah, no, no, member Chisholm, no, no one else other than yourself, uh, and member Watley had any comments, additions, deletions, or suggestions, and I thought that you and I and member Watley were going to schedule a call for Thursday to try to incorporate or to go over one last review, uh, but I have no, received no other input from any other member of the body.
Okay, and, and that, my apologies on that, I decided to get out here and rake leaves, and then my sinus has flared up for the past couple of days and it put me down like a dog, so my apologies on that. Um, if we do table this again, we still have an opportunity to convene and discuss further if need be. And also that allows our colleagues to give any further input that they might have, other than that, that's all I have, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I just think that that would be pertinent, uh, Councilman, and so when it comes to previous business, then we'll just table that item again and then move forward. The objection, uh. Alright, here, here in the, uh, item E, any questions as it relates to item E? Alright, Doug, Attorney Jones, you have some items for close session.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor.
Sorry, am I moving too fast, I apologize, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and see, when we're flipping pages, you read it, you say item E, I'm not sure what item E is until you know you read it like you do in the, in the meeting. I had some questions I wanted to ask about the, um, the firehouse, I know this money is a grant and everything, but there's some things in there that, um, there, it says possible additional items not included in this proposal, then it has a list of things that really should be a, uh, should be the contractors', uh, uh, responsibility, but it says it goes further, and I just was concerned, I was just asking, I know this money isn't coming out of the city budget, but still I'd just like an explanation as to why some of these things are additional, when it's part of the, you know, the construction price.
Yeah, and I mean, you're right, Councilwoman, you are the fiduciary, so, um, we definitely want to make sure that we're being responsible. Chief Hubbard? I know Chief Hubbard actually comes in sometimes on the iPhone, I don't see him on the line, Chief, you on the line, please raise your hand. I know the treasurer won't be on until seven, so we may have to get that, those questions answered in general session, Councilwoman.
That, that's fine, uh, it's just that some of this stuff just seems like it's part of the actual construction, and if we're paying this kind of money, you know, I'm not a carpenter or anything, but still, I'd like, I'd like an explanation. And if we're paying this kind of money, you know, I'm not a carpenter or anything, but still, I'd like, I'd like an explanation.
That's right, totally agree. Totally agree, okay. So let's, let's start, go, there he is, Chief, he has his hand raised there. Chief Hubbard?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you heard the question?
Do I have a question?
I said you heard the question?
I did, um, if she's asking for the technical side of this, this project, um, I'm gonna have to answer just like Councilperson Watley did, I'm not a carpenter. Um, but I think Jerome was on the call and I'm not sure if he would have the answer, or we're gonna have to get the actual company to answer those questions. Uh, I, you know, we got the bids and submitted all the bids. But as far as the, the details of how to do the work, I don't have any answer to that.
Okay, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, it says on um, this page, possible additional items not included in this proposal. Then it says the cost to replace rotted wood. Then it says, I think, I think, place any wet base substrate, I don't even know what that is. The cost to replace deteriorated decking, the cost to install, and then they have an additional money in here for that. So I'm just concerned as to why that's not part of the proposal, because it seems like to replace a roof or to replace something, rotted wood would be part of that, that's all I'm asking.
Well, and I, and I see your point, I think what it comes down to is like any other contractor, uh, when you're going into a job that's not new construction, there are things that could pop up that you didn't anticipate. And I think what the, what the builders or the contractors do is they either include extra money for those things, and if they don't do them, the money won't be charged, or they tell you that's not part of the bid and it'll be based on time and material. So when you're doing something like a rehab or reconstruction and you start pulling things up and tearing stuff out, you, you never know what you're gonna run into, and I think that's what they're trying to uh, explain there.
Okay, and just finally, this uh, this is all done through grants anyway, correct? We're not spending any city money on this.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Bivens has his hand raised, can we recognize him, please?
Hello, Mr. Bivens. Hey, good evening. Uh, to the council, to the mayor and the audience, this the better spray what Chief Hubbard just said. So anytime you have a roofing job, those additional costs are because when they begin to tear off that roof, they don't know what's underneath that roof. So you could have some bad wood, so they're giving you a cost that they would, they would charge to replace that wood per wood, or the deck could be bad and they're giving you the cost on that. So that's standard when you go to replacing the roof, because all we know is what we see. But when you go to pull it off, you don't know what's underneath there. So like the chief said, if they don't have to, if the deck is good and the wood is good, then you won't see that cost, but if they have to replace some of the items, they let you know upfront what it is per wood. Or per, per the deck cost, I didn't actually see the bid, but that's standard, because I had the roof replaced at my house in my garage. And that was the same way when I had it done. They gave me a price for the roof and they gave me a price for the wood and the deck if it was bad. Because they don't know, so they start peeling off layers. And that, and that, and um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that roof at the fire station is original, so it's probably thirty, forty years old.
All right. Well, go ahead.
Does that answer her question?
I understand what you all are saying, um, but I've had roofs replaced too, and whatever the price was they gave me, that's the price I paid without any additional. But this might be something new, so I'm not arguing with you about it, I just asked to be explained. And you've explained it, I don't have to agree with it, but I accept your explanation.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Councilman Shaw?
I, I just wanted to know if, if, how he's gonna do the roof and the, and the HVAC, um, the heating and cooling part, is that gonna be at the same time or are they gonna do the roof, I mean, how's that gonna be done? Far as a timing, timing standpoint?
Mr. Bivens? Or Hubbard, either one of you guys?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, my understanding is that either one of those projects can go on first or second. Uh, the way the HVAC guy explained it was, um, the way that system is attached to the roof, you can either put it on before you replace the roof or after. Uh, so as far as the timing of it goes, the roof is gonna be based on season. And since we're getting ready to come into the winter, that probably won't get started until the, to the spring of next year. Um, so, uh, as far as logistics, I, I don't think it really matters which one goes first. And the, the, the contractors, we, between myself and them, will work out the timing of it.
Okay, so you're gonna get the HVAC put on first, or are you gonna get the roof put on first? I mean, can he do that in, in?
Sound like it all depends on the weather, Councilman.
Yeah.
If, it, can he do it in this season, or is he gonna do it, you know, in the next seasons come up?
I know the roof will have to wait until the spring, um, they've done some repairs to keep us from, you know, to kind of patch up some of the, the um, the areas that are dripping right now, I should say pouring.
Right.
Um, but as far as doing the project, it'll have to be in the spring, the HVAC, we, once, if council approves them tonight, I could probably get that done before winter.
Because I know that that was a problem that you had may mentioned some time ago, so that's what I was trying to.
We do have issues with that for sure, because we, sometimes we have heat, sometimes we don't. In the summer, sometimes we have air, so if that's something that can go in and it won't hinder the roof, absolutely, absolutely.
Now, now, do you have, do you have the uh, total, total amount of the whole grant? I don't have my papers in front of me, so.
It's uh,
I don't have that in front of me either.
I tried to get it today to be kind of.
Two hundred and something thousand, uh, let me see here.
So kind of roughly about two hundred thousand?
It's more than, it's about two fourteen or something like, let me look, hang on, see if I can find it here.
Okay, and while you're finding that, any other questions? As it relates to this particular item?
I just had a statement, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
I know with the fire uh, department and just like any other entities, uh, those units being up top, a lot of times they have to get a crane out there, and that's the major safety point. Uh, we did have them over at our church one time and the ground was too soft. And they had to reposition, fortunately, but if the ground, it was concrete over there, so think year-round, they can do it anytime as long as it's safe and not icy.
Mm-hmm. The, the amount is two hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You're welcome, and uh, if I need to, I can forward just to the top of your email. All right, then, going into closed session. Any items? I'm sorry.
Now, wh- were you, were, were we gonna do E or are you just?
Oh, no, the item E, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just have a, I just have a quick question on it. Now, I know, it talked about, you know, no upfront costs to the city. But what about, you know, it may mention about providing technical assistance and administrative support? Now, is there going to be any type of cost to us where we're gonna be, you know, spending, spending those dollars to try to support them with this?
And it'll be, you know, of course, any, any, anything that we can support from, you know, administrative point, so Tracy Anne Jennings is gonna be our special project manager, of course, is gonna be the, the person that's spearheading this, um, working with this particular group. So, you know, of course, her costs, you know, was already salaried and then anything else above that. Unless it's something else that I'm missing, Tracy is on the line to speak to that. Tracy Anne?
Good evening, no, you're correct, Mayor, that there are no associated costs that the city will incur on this project, and like you said, I will be the City of Ingersoll Park person working with the, uh, leadership group to pull everything together, but no, there are zero costs to the city.
And, and also, Mr. Chair, it, are we gonna be working with or trying to get Wayne County to kind of uh, help us out with this uh, you know, building on this, on this lot here?
Yes, that, this is all part of that, I mean, this is, this is the um, of course, tied into the Greenway project, but um, the, the Friends of the Rouge and the Rouge project and the dredging project that was started by the uh, uh, previous administration, previous council, so this is just continuing on to, to build on the work.
Yeah, because I know they, they may mention that Ingle Park doesn't have any formal amenities for like paddlers. So are we gonna work with Wayne County to try to, you know, kind of help build some of those amenities to get people to come to Ingle Park, come to the city?
Correct.
From, yeah, from a, from a um, you know, from an attraction standpoint?
Yes, and the county is well aware of it, of course, our Commissioner Glenn Anderson, thank him all the time for just being um, just pushing and pushing the needle as it relates to the City of Ingle, making sure we had those amenities um, at the park, so definitely they're aware of the project and we're definitely gonna be building the relationship to continue to build more park to attract people.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, sir. All right, David?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna slow down, Councilwoman Wiley?
Yeah, uh, Kim, uh, Mayor Pro Tim was first, her name is, was up there a couple of times. So if you wanna let her go ahead, I just wanna bring something to council's attention, that's all.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Thank you, um, Councilman, uh, Wally, um, on this item, um, E, we did under the last administration, we had someone come into your, um, come in and speak on trying to clean the Rouge River. Is this something that they're doing with this?
This is that project, this is all part of that.
Okay, so at the, so we never got a portion, how much it was gonna cost, because I, I do believe at that time, they were asking all the municipalities in Wayne County to participate. And, but they never gave us a dollar amount, so what you're saying now, we don't have to pay any money?
I'm, I'm not saying that at all, um, this is a particular uh, grant that we're looking to be a part of. Um, and we'll have Tracy, if you want to, just explain a little bit more as it relates to that.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and councilmembers, yes, give me one moment, I'm pulling up my paperwork. We do also, we should have um, Herman Jenkins of Friends of the Rouge on the line as well. But this particular project is um, simply, right now, for this funding, um, to work towards the trail development and to work, I, there's um, information in your packet about this project. Um, this is just phase one, design development. And um, we're looking to get technical assistance monies to help putting together a plan, if that makes any sense, apprehensive plan.
And that's Herman on the line right there, Mr. Jenkins, welcome.
Yes, hello everyone, how are you?
Fine, and you, sir?
I'm doing great, uh, my name's Herman Jenkins, I'm a trails manager with uh, Friends of the Rouge. And just as uh, Tracy Anne mentioned, uh, we're uh, partnering with uh, the National Kidney Foundation. Uh, Wayne County uh, Parks is definitely a part of this, along with the Ingle Task Force. Uh, and our sole mission under the umbrella of the Lower Rouge River uh, Water Trail Leadership Committee um, in subcommittee format, is to pursue a fifty thousand dollar grant through the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan uh, to secure design and development uh, for the multipurpose trailhead that will incorporate uh, a universal kayak launch, a universally accessible kayak launch uh, into Ingle Park. Uh, the goal is also to be able to improve that parking lot, so there's greater access. Uh, this is part of a larger vision, uh, to develop a twenty-nine mile water trail from Canton to River Rouge. Um, I am aware that there was a call um, um, as a part of the leadership committee in the past, uh, where they were asking municipalities to uh, pay sort of a fee as a part of this, that is not a, a part of this ask at all. Uh, we're simply uh, approaching this honorable body, uh, looking for a letter of support uh, so that we can move forward and pursue design and development for the multipurpose trailhead. Uh, and hopefully be able to work more closely with the city, uh, when we do have design development complete to pursue construction dollars, uh, perhaps through an M dot tap grant. Uh, but those are uh, funds that nonprofits like Friends of the Rouge uh, and the National Kidney Foundation can't apply for uh, to support these efforts, but municipalities themselves do have access for. Um, we can certainly do the heavy lifting, uh, you simply have to say that uh, you're, you're a willing partner and this is something that you want to bring to your community.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I think it's still, I think it's something different than what I'm asking, um, this was actually, when it came in, this was actually cleaning the Rouge River.
Yes, this is a different, uh, that, that will probably be a different project. Um, you know, we have ongoing efforts uh, related to managing woody debris in the river. Um, but nothing where we have requested funding from municipalities to support that. Um, Friends of the Rouge efforts with woody debris management are strictly volunteer at this point. Uh, Wayne County did receive a uh, grant uh, under the banner of the Lower Rouge Habitat Restoration Project, uh, where they're working to remove ten of the largest log jams along the Lower Rouge River, uh, which is where the trail is located. Um, and I do think that portions of that, uh, those targeted areas are within the City of Ingle.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, just something I wanna bring to the attention of council. Each week we get a packet and it's overloaded with information. I wanted to suggest that possibly to make it easier on the clerk or whatever, that we do the boards and commissions in only one packet a month. Because we are, we get that every month and it very seldom changes and it's most of the time wrong. So it's, it's possible we could look into doing it only in one packet a month. It would save money and paper and my eyesight.
I don't have any objections to that, I think it's a good idea. Uh, we'll start working towards that, if no one has any objections on this body. All right, I'll work with the city clerk to make sure that we make that happen.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, ma'am, if it's nothing else, let's uh, we got a few minutes, let's spend it in closed session, David, you have some items for us?
We do, Mayor, I just wanted to give a, a gentle reminder that Chief Hubbard requested uh, some communication from City Attorney's Office regarding IAF negotiations, I didn't know if you wanted to do that when we come out of closed session or now, I defer to you. Uh, but we do, we do have two closed session matters, they will be the Clark Harrington matter and the Blackwell Wimberly matter.
Okay, let's do the, um, let's do the communication from uh, Mr. Allen while we're here now.
Okay, well, if the host could unmute uh, Jim Allen uh, with regard to IAF negotiations, please, thank you.
He's unmuted.
Yep, uh, thank you, everybody, um. I uh, am always pleased to address the, the body typically when we're talking about labor negotiations, we do it in closed, but this is, I think, an exception to that general rule because um, uh, the, the public will, I'm sure, want to have a, have an understanding of where things are at with the, with the fire department and our negotiations with the IAFF, um, because um, you know, it is a, a, a serious issue um, that uh, that the administration's confronting on a, on a daily basis. And I want to preface my comments by saying that um, calls are being handled um, uh, either by our uh, IAFF members in the Ingle Fire Department or through our automatic aid pact with the surrounding communities. Our response times are within national standards. However, um, there, there are three factors that are kind of holding that together. Um, uh, one is the chief. Um, uh, one is the chief and the IFF are working extraordinarily hard, um, under some very difficult staffing circumstances that are not just impacting the Ince Fire Department, but departments throughout the region. But they are working, I think, above and beyond the call of duty, um, uh, given the numbers that, um, you know, that they're, that they're down to at this point, uh, partially due to the fact that there were some on-the-job injuries that are, um, keeping our staffing numbers low. We also have, uh, the good work of our neighboring communities. There is a resolution that's up tonight. Um, I think to thank the neighboring communities for the assistance, um, that they provide to us. Um, of course, we reciprocate in, uh, supply services to our neighbors when, uh, they need it under our auto- automatic aid pack. Um, but they are obviously a key component to the delivery of our fire services. The third factor, I think, has been luck. Um, we have not had any major catastrophes. Um, but I don't like to press our luck. Um, and I think the, um, community should understand where we're at with our staffing, uh, situation. We have nineteen budgeted positions, one of which is, is our fire marshal. So we're basically working with eighteen, um, firefighters, um, three platoons of six firefighters apiece. Due to the way that federal labor laws are set up under Fair Labor Standards Act and other, uh, other standards, um, we have two off of every shift, um, for their days off. Just like everybody gets a day off, firefighters are entitled to have days off. So on any given day with a makeup of eighteen firefighters, six of whom are on duty, um, for twenty-four hour shift, um, two of them are mandated to be off just under Fair Labor Standards Act. That means that on many days, we're running with four, um, with, with four firefighters, assuming that no other members of the shift are utilizing their contractual, um, right to, to take time off. Or in the instance that we're dealing with right now, we have three, um, firefighters that are, uh, OJIs or on-the-job injuries. Um, so we're, we're, we are running, um, short most days, um, unless we bring people in for overtime, which is what we've been doing to fill, fill the gap. But you also run an advanced life support system, uh, in, in Ince, which is a great service to your residents. Um, I don't know what the statistics are specifically, but there've been, there, the, the, the fire department has been responsible for many saved lives through the ALS system. Um, ALS is more expensive, um, it's more labor, uh, labor intensive. And we're running two units because that's what the call volume of Ince requires us to run. So if we have four firefighters on duty and we have one ambulance in service, that means that we are, um, making a lot of scenes with two, two firefighters and, and we're met at the scene with other departments assisting, but we can't operate, um, under federal safety guidelines unless we have two men in, two men out. Um, so, uh, the chief has done a, um, fantastic job of managing the situation. Um, the IFF has, I think, performed very well and the residents should be grateful that we have dedicated members of our fire department that are, um, working as hard as they are, uh, under these circumstances. Um, but we, we are in a situation right now with the labor market being what it is, that, um, there is a shortage of firefighters out there and we are in the midst of negotiating a labor contract. Um, even with some of the, um, concessions that we would normally ask for, if the IFF were willing to give us those concessions. And so far, they haven't been and that's their right. Um, it's not a foregone conclusion that we would have candidates, um, for the positions that we offer at the rates that we can afford. In fact, we've lost a number of firefighters over the course of the last, uh, twelve months that I've been aware of, um, because they've gotten offers from other departments. So, you know, we're in a situation where we need more, we need more staffing in order to make sure that we have a safe, uh, number of, of people on duty at all times. And there's obviously a cost to that. Um, but we also have to increase in, in order, in order to remain competitive and keep people in, um, that means that we're going to have to, uh, increase costs, um, for the cost of labor. Um, so that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell. At this point, I don't think anybody is, um, pressing a panic button as to, um, uh, us being able to respond to fires. And again, a lot of that are those three factors. The, the chief and the firefighters working very diligently, um, our neighbors assisting us and, and a little bit of luck. But the council is going to have to, um, over the course of the next, uh, few months, take into consideration adjustments to staffing and, um, it's likely that we're going to have to increase our, our labor costs. Um, because the market is, is demanding that. So, uh, in, in the interim, the, uh, department is operating and responding. Chief's doing a great job, um, but the, the, uh, you know, we're getting to the point where we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions in order to fully staff the department.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments as it relates to what we just heard from Jim?
Yeah, I, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm trying to figure out, uh, I, I thought that the, um, firefighters, uh, union and the city was in, in negotiation.
We are, we, we are, uh, Reverend Williams.
Well, can you tell me why this is coming forward right now? Uh, breakdown, is it something like a breakdown in, in communications of?
No, we, we, we do, right, we do have a state mediator that is assisting us with our negotiations. But the issue of staffing and the staffing level is one that the council needs to be aware of, in fairness to the council. Um, it's also an issue that the public deserves to hear about because, um, they're, they're paying taxes for a fire department and expect a response from, uh, the fire department. So we're doing what we can, um, but the, you know, the situ, the, the market situation, just like it is, you know, with the delivery of goods and services throughout the economy. We are now, we are now facing similar issues. And this isn't just an Ince issue. This is, this is impacting communities throughout the region, um, where this is a labor shortage type issue. Um, in, you know, the, the traditional means of us fixing that problem is by increasing our costs. Um, the problem is, is you all know, because you, you're on these meetings every other week, is that, you know, we have to somehow find the resources, um, to, uh, to do that.
Okay, so I said, I'm some kind of fellow, why this is coming, uh, you, you have, you guys, okay. Have you, um, communicated with the administration on, 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 on all of this before bringing it to the council and public?
The meet, the administration, I, I, I consider myself to be a part of the administration and I work, yes. The chief, the mayor, or the, the chief, the mayor, the HR director, the finance director, we are all working very diligently to try and come up with some creative solutions to, um, uh, providing the service to the public. Um, but we are running into a situation where, um, you know, what we can offer to pay new people to come in is not attracting people to come into the profession. There's a shortage of public safety officers. When I say that, I'm talking police and fire throughout the state. The state is currently considering a two hundred and fifty million dollar supplemental funding bill for police. But as of yet, they have not, um, because the, the state is down four thousand police officers from, uh, the, the, uh, the, from two thousand and one. We have four thousand fewer police officers in the state now than we did twenty years ago. We're seeing similar issues on the fire side as well. The state has taken some welcome steps towards potentially providing funding for police. But we don't have a great solution on the fire side. Um, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking for. Um, and as we look for those solutions, we want to make sure that the public and the council are aware that we're doing the best that we can to, um, solve what is a very difficult problem to solve and one that many communities are struggling with as well.
Uh, okay, I, I, I'll leave it like that for right now, but there are some serious concerns and maybe I better talk that over with the administration.
All right.
Uh, Mayor, before you go?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Just two points without all the hyperbole. Um, they're asking for higher fees at higher salaries. Is that correct? Do we have any kind of idea of what would satisfy that, the numbers?
Um, in terms of the numbers of, uh, uh, additional firefighters, like we're down to fifteen able-bodied firefighters right now, which is three five-man platoons. Um, and that's definitely cutting it very close when you're running two ALS units. So, um, you know, anything at this point, uh, any increase in the number of, uh, staff and the chief can speak more directly, um, perhaps in closed session about the bare minimum. But we know and we've already, this isn't anything that we have not discussed at the negotiating table with the union. They know and we know and we've discussed the fact that we're running our shifts with, um, uh, you know, that we need to, that we need to have more people on our shifts.
We're understanding that from your statements, but still some sort of round figure for us to think about would be good and some sort of, um, monetary, whatever they're expecting. Because we can't make decisions unless we have all the information. Now, to Mr. Mayor, um, can we use the art money for stuff like this?
Yes, yes, and, and no. So, yes, for possible increases, no for, um, new hires. Uh, so that, because of the denial from our, you know, from the federal government for the grant that we were seeking, um, as it relates to being able to add additional officers. Remember, we had those five officers from the grant for the past three years. Well, the money ran out. So we went back to, to, uh, to re-up, if you will, and they said no. So unfortunately.
But the, if we, you said yes for monies, but not for them. But what I just heard them say is that if we offered more money, we'd get more people. So wouldn't that work hand in hand or am I being too Pollyannaish?
No, not at all, but it's kind of folks that are there currently. You know, of, of course, we want to take care of them as it relates to getting them up to the standard of the surrounding communities as it relates to, to, to firefighters and, and EMTs. So that would be our first step. And then, of course, those folks entering into the, um, and to the fire, to the fire department. We want to make sure that we're giving them enough money to retain them and they're not leaving.
Okay, well, I don't want to belabor this because I think this is a discussion we need to have in depth at some point and prior to the end of their negotiation. So I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, keep going. We can go into closed session and get, you know, the meeting moving if no one else has anything, but it's just food for thought.
Right, I, I would just, I, I would just add, um, Councilwoman, that, you know, this is, I, I, I want to make clear to everybody, you know, the firefighters are, are, um, doing the best they can do to assist in, assist through this staffing crisis. They're not, you know, there, there's no villains here. This is a structural problem that is impacting, um, uh, local governments throughout the state. And it has to do with the manner in which local governments are funded. But this is, you know, a difficult thing to manage around under the current funding structure that the state has left us with. It's just that simple.
So when we go into this discussion, will we get the information of, of state funding so we can understand it too?
Yeah, so, so again, this, this was just, again, Jimax, you know, as we were talking just about, you know, where we are at with negotiations. Just a lot of things has been going on and because we're short of staff, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we let the council know what was going on from the administration direct. So that was just an attempt to do that. We are still going through negotiations. Um, we will be bringing you more information as more information is unveiled. But this is just like, you know, again, just a snapshot of what's going on. So you won't be blindsided. You won't say, you know, why you didn't tell us this earlier, that we were down, you know, firefighters and not able to, you know, take care of our people within the City of Ince, where we're not at that point as of yet. But we just want to make sure that we're telling the council what's going on.
Well, then that begs the question of how long has this been going on? And this is the first time you're telling us. And like I said, I don't want to belabor nothing.
Council, Councilwoman, thi- this has been, there is, there have been variations of this problem since before I arrived, uh, on, on the scene in, you know, ten or twelve years ago. Um, and these problems have existed in communities for quite some time because the state is, in its infinite wisdom, decided that to balance its budget, it's dropped its support to local, local communities. There's no, there's no mystery in that. And you get those numbers every year. They're in, they're in your budget. Um, but this is, you know, it's, we're, we're getting to the point where the problem is getting more serious. And so we've managed it for many years, but we don't control the labor market. I mean, the labor market is what the labor market is and we're doing the best that we can to, to respond to a, an issue that is affecting, again, communities throughout southeastern Michigan.
All right, then.
Okay, maybe I'm a little confused, Mr. Mayor.
Let, let's pause, let's pause right there and we'll definitely make sure that you.
Well, I got a question to ask.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, now, I, I don't really know, Mr. James Allen. Can you tell me his title and what he does, does with the negotiation?
That's our, that's our city attorney, Mr. Jim Allen.
Okay, he's the city attorney for the negotiations.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, all right. So the time is now seven oh seven PM. And of course, our general meeting should start at seven o'clock. So if it's, no one on the po, uh, body opposes, let's move right into the general meeting. Does everybody agree to that? All right, here, no one opposes. Let's move right into it and, and, and Councilman Williams, if you could, please, as I call this meeting to order, uh, the Ince City Council, today is Monday, November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The time is now seven oh seven PM. As we call this meeting to order, Councilman Williams, can you please bring us prayer?
Let us pray. Father God, we come right now, no other way but leaning on your everlasting love. Realize, Father, as we continue to try to put our frauds in perspective, Father, we ask that you bless the City of Ince, the Father. Bind us together with love, unity, and strength as we move this city forward. In the name of Jesus, we pray. And Father, for those who have went on to be with you, Father, we just ask that you continue to have mercy upon us as down here in this community now. So, Father, we just, right now, want to praise you and give you the glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Moving right to Pledge of Allegiance, Troy, please. All right, thank you. Moving right into roll call, please, city clerk.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here reporting from the, uh, County of Wayne, State of Michigan.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Here, um, in the City of Ince, I'm a hall.
Councilman Williams.
Here, community of my home, in, in the city of Inchester, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, reporting remotely from my home in the city of Inchester, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, reporting virtually from my, uh, home in the city of Inchester, County, Inchester, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilman Chisholm.
President reported virtually from my home in the city of Inchester, County of Wayne.
And Councilman Shaw.
I'm here in the city of Inchester.
Okay, we have all members present.
Awesome, we have a call, moving right into item D. Um, we normally try to do our closed session during our orientation session, but as you can see, we ran over a little. If it pleases the cosmetic bodies, um, you all want to go into closed session now or do you want to move this item to the end of the agenda?
Move to the end, yeah.
Does everybody agree with that as we move it to the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All right, then, moving into the appro- approval of the agenda. What's your pleasure?
We'll move.
With the, with the item DB moved to the end of the agenda, closed session after may and council communication.
Support.
We moved and properly supported any other discussion. Hearing the unroll call, please, city clerk.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes.
And Madam Proton Howard.
Yes. You hear me?
And yes, I got it, thank you.
You are.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Wenderly, you have a six yays.
All right, motion carries, moving right into presentations and discussions going into public hearing. Let's see here, so none, so let's, we, we've had the presentation on this. This certainly no public here, we're just going to go right into let's actually, let's Lark, let's have a Lark group, give us the presentation as it relates to the information that it has for us. Um, and then of course, um, we'll be going into the first reading, so let's do that at this time. A Lark group. Mr. Mark.
Yes, Mayor, yes.
You have a presentation for the body and the public?
I, uh, I'd be happy to go through whatever information, um, council members like me to re, I can summarize, um, or I believe the city's attorney has the, uh, sort of the breakdown of the tax revenue to the city, if that's something that we want to go through.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly what I want you guys to do.
Excellent. I understand that, I believe Harry, uh, city's attorney, Harry, ha, and I apologize his last name. I may, I may mispronounce.
And he had, he does have that information, I was just making sure.
Well, I went. If Harry could pull that up, we can kind of walk through that. Might be easier.
Hello, everybody, um, hi, welcome, uh, Mayor. Um, I do have that, um, spreadsheet, uh, that shows the, um, changes in the tax revenue uh, to the city, uh, as a result of the pilot, both in connection with the senior center and the family center. Um, if I could share my screen, if, am I allowed to do that? Am I able to? Looks like I can, hold on a second, let's, let me press it and I hope everybody can see this.
There you are, you got it.
All right, beautiful, beautiful. So you can see here, um, Mark, I don't know if you want to talk to this or if you'd like me to, um, either way.
I can start out just by not giving it, laying the format out here so that it's as clear as we can possibly be. You, you see in the orange, in the very light orange box, uh, there, it says parcel number ending in zero, zero, three. That pertains to the senior building, that is a, a single building, it's seven stories, it has a hundred and fifty units, apartment units. It is, uh, sixty-two and over or disabled, restricted, it's project-based section eight. A hundred percent of the units are project-based section eight, so they're restricted to low-income residents that are seniors. Um, that's, it's, it's a long-term affordable community. Um, what you see there is, you see that in the previous years, it has been under a pilot. It had, there's an existing pilot on the senior project. What we're suggesting here is to remove, basically, saying no more pilot. Full ad valorem taxes on the larger portion, uh, which is the senior portion, a hundred and fifty units.
Let me stop right there, as you're going through, just think of the general public and those that can't see what we're talking about. Speak on the numbers.
Yes, okay. So, so the estimate for twenty twenty, um, the pilot payment estimate forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars in twenty twenty. Again, this is in arrears, so, and these are estimates. Twenty twenty-one, if the pilot were removed and full ad valorem taxes were applied, instead of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars of payments by the owner, that would increase to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. However, that would be paid for by the Michigan Treasury. Full ad valorem tax proceeds paid by the Michigan Treasury once a year, starting at the end of twenty twenty-two. Of course, the city's portion is a, of, as you go lower, you'll see that the sit, this is all aggregated. Both projects and it shows the city's share of that tax revenue. It shows it in the aggregate of both, in both the senior project and the family project together. The, the city's share of the tax revenue total is equal to thirty-seven point nine-five percent because the way the millage rates work, those are the millage rates that we estimated based on the information we have, and I understand that millage rates change, uh, periodically. Based on understanding of the millage rates, thirty-three point two four five, two, four, three, five is thirty-seven point nine-five percent of the total millage. So we applied that percentage to produce the city's share. And now, what we can see, and we'll look at this in the aggregate because both of these projects are tied together, this is a, is a uh, both of these projects, the senior project and the family project are tied together, they're adjacent properties are writ, built under this, at the same time, uh, originally had one project-based half contract across both par- parcels. And we're pursuing the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, a substantial rehabilitation of both projects. And these, these pieces, the senior tax exemption, which allows for the full proceeds from the Michigan Treasury be paid to the city, you can scroll up, Harry, um, to the, to the orange, uh, box there again. Move then to the family project. So, so right now, the total, uh, would increase from forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars on the senior project, total tax liability now increases to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars on the senior project alone. Moving to the second parcel listed there, ending in zero, zero, four, that's the family property. That's, those are townhomes, there are six townhomes, each of those townhome buildings has approximately six residential units in it. There are a total of thirty-six residential apartment units in the family townhomes property. Uh, those are also a hundred percent affordable, low-income housing for families. And they are a hundred percent project-based section eight. What, what has existed to date on the family property is full ad valorem taxes. So you can see in twenty twenty, the full ad valorem tax estimate there at eighty-eight thousand one hundred and eight, ninety-eight dollars. What we are proposing and asking, or is a pilot be placed on the family property? And so what you see, what you can kind of look at in totality is that we're foregoing the pilot on the senior property. Which generates significant additional proceeds uh, to all taxing bodies in the city of Inchester on the senior property. And then we are asking for the pilot, which we're calling the four percent pilot rate. That's the four percent service fee that's listed in the ordinance. And it's based on what's listed there, the net shelter rent estimate. So net shelter rent is going to be the contract rents, which are determined by HUD on an annual basis for the family property. Less whatever the utilities were, whatever the utilities are. And that's in, in this estimate, that's what, that's what the conclusion is, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars times four percent. Includes to ten thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. But you look at it in totality, because what you're getting is a total package, it's, it's both properties together is the, where it says total owner payments, both parcels. And so you could see in twenty twenty, the sum of the eighty-eight thousand one ninety-eight and then above was the forty-nine thousand eight forty-three equals a sum of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand forty-one dollars estimated in recent years in twenty twenty. Sum of the ten thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which pertains to the family pilot and the three hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is, would be the new ad valorem payment from the senior property equals the total of the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. So when you figure out the exact what would go to the city, city's portion is the thirty-seven point nine-five percent of those total owner payments, both parcels. Thirty-seven point nine-five percent of the a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty means that the city, the city generated fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars approximately in, in twenty twenty. Both parcels. Going forward, because of the huge increase on the senior tax revenues, the thirty-seven point nine-five percent of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollar estimate would some, would, would produce one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So you see the difference between what the city would be getting under the typical status quo is fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars from both parcels. And we are suggesting that it would be better for everyone, especially the city, for two reasons. Go with this proposal, which would increase it ninety thousand dollars additional annual gross tax revenue to the city. A hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, the difference between a hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one is approximately ninety-one thousand dollars. And that's annual additional tax revenue to the city. That's number one reason this proposal makes financial sense for the city. It also makes enormous practical sense for preservation of affordable housing in the city of Inchester for its low-income residents. These are low-income, uh, resident families and seniors. Total across both properties, a hundred and fifty units at the senior property plus thirty-six at the family property is a hundred and eighty-six residential apartment homes um, that are dedicated to the low-income residents of the city that would be receiving, if, if we can proceed with this, we are prepared to submit building plans for review and prepared to close on financing in March of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Um, that would, that would allow us to proceed with approximately forty-four thousand dollars of reha- rehab per unit on average. So we're, we're, this money gets the leverage that we're able to create with this package, allows us to invest over forty-four thousand dollars per unit into both sites. Sites that haven't experienced a substantial rehab since their original construction in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, and I'm, I'm open to any questions that anyone would have.
All right, let's do this, um, just to be decent and in order, um, let's have a motion to open a public hearing. Um, city clerk, if you could, please, read into the record. City clerk.
Yes, I'm here. The public hearing would be to hear from the residents and business community. Um. The, um, their voices on the Cherry Hill Family Development Ordinance.
Or is there a motion to open up for public hearing?
So move.
Support. Any discussion on that? Hearing the roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Proton Howard, excuse me.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
That would be six yays.
All right, this gives us a time for the, as it relates to the Cherry Hill Family Development Ordinance and its proposed um, pilot program and the avalorium taxes on the seniors, um, particular complex that's in that area. For those people in the general public to be able to ask, ask any questions or make any comments regarding this particular issue. Councilman Chisholm, if you could, please, give them the technical side of it.
Absolutely, we are at the public hearing. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to the matters that the mayor just stated. If you have joined us by the Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature to be acknowledged or recognized. If you have joined us by telephone, please use the star nine feature on your handset to raise your hand to be recognized. Uh, once you are recognized, please state your name for the record. Mr. Chair, I don't see any hands just yet.
All right, then, we're still open, so as it relates to the presentation that we just, um, that we just heard, um, council, do you have any questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Wiley.
It's me again, uh, would it be, um, appropriate for us to read the resolution that they want us to pass tonight to the public? So I mean, I think this is a lot more, um, specific than what we've heard so far.
Yes.
And it coincides with what Jim Allen was talking about as far as revenue and us using, um, you know, uh, mutual aid assistance from other people, it addresses that too. So if you want to have them read that, maybe there's a better understanding in the actual resolution.
All right, and Harry or the clerk, either one of you guys. Which one? Harry? Think you were instrumental in drafting this, want to read this into the record?
I'm here and I think I'm sharing the ordinance on screen, is that correct?
Yeah, that's it, no, no, it's the, um, it's the resolution that needs to be, uh, read.
I thought you wanted the ordinance, I'm sorry. Uh, this, your, uh, mi- Councilwoman Ma- Wiley, is this, uh, what, what you're referring to, the request for council action?
No, that's not what I'm referring to. Mayor, did you want me to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, this is a resolution to recommend the cities of Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Wayne, and Westland for the provision of automatic aid for fire response.
Councilwoman Wiley. Is that?
But it's it's be, it's in our packet and it speaks to this ordinance.
Yeah, I think that that's part of the actual item A under new business for the mutual.
You don't want that read because I think that has a better understanding than the actual ordinance package. And, uh, you know, I have issues with ordinances anyway.
Just trying to understand what you're saying, I, I think, I, I'm just trying to understand exactly what, what it is that you're saying. Two, because I think one is two, is, i- i- it's two separate issues.
Okay, well, I'm thinking.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilwoman Wiley, those are two different items, the item you're talking about is item nine A, we're on item eight A.
Oh, but I'm just saying that when I read this, it speaks more to the adoption of the ordinance than the The adoption of the ordinance than the technical ordinance does, but that's okay, we can go on. I'm 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 wrong.
Well, no, the mutual aid is something with fire, the ordinance is something with housing.
Yeah, I understand that, but they coincide is what I'm trying to say, because they're saying because Michigan has not given us. The money we need, which was part of this package also, that we have to look at other ways to. Fund these different things, but like I said, we can go on, I'm I'm, you know.
No, I think I think I think what I think you're actually. Merging the two together and making it make sense overall, because as it relates to this particular item, we're looking at. Taking off of the pilot that we currently have on the um Cherry Hill uh family development right at the corner. Of uh Cherry Hill and Middle Belt, the senior towers. From what we receive typically is like forty nine thousand a year. To four avalorium taxes up to three hundred and seventy some thousand a year, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, no, I understand that, I I understand that we'll be getting more money in total. For these properties than we've been getting the past couple of years. But um. Maybe I am confused, but I thought there was something he said as to the way the state. Provides um. Well, like I said, that's that's fine, uh give give the people a chance to speak on it. I understand exactly what we're doing, but I just thought the two made sense together because of the funding we are not getting from the state, so.
Got you.
Councilman Watley, this is Mark CPO, I I totally agree with you. Um because when you, i- if the state is finding ways to reduce uh ability to fund. You have to look for different ways to generate tax revenue and fortunately, this. Scenario for the Cherry Hill properties increases your tax revenue and preserves affordable housing. Um safe, decent.
Also, two, of course, increases the quality of life for those folks in that area, but also to increases tax value. Because of the monies that guys, you didn't mention that, you're putting in how much into the project?
We will be putting in across both projects. Over forty four thousand per unit approximately. Six point five nine million uh in hard costs.
Yep, that's that's the number I was looking for.
Yep.
Okay, um again, this is uh the time in the in in the agenda for public participation. Um this is open to the general public outside of the council and the council, of course. To ask any more questions that they have before we close. I wanted to see if we had any other hands or. And Councilman Chisholm, I don't know, I don't see any, do you see any?
Oh, I haven't seen any hands raised for the public hearing, really, really, oh Timothy Williams just raised his hand.
Good, okay, then if we cannot mute him, please. Former former pro team Timothy Williams.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, sir, go ahead.
Okay, uh I just want to know uh how much revenue would this bring to city?
Mark. This would increase from historical tax revenue. Based on our understanding of last year's calculations. It would increase the city's annual tax revenue by over ninety thousand dollars per year.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, Chair recognize uh Norman McDaniel.
Good evening, um I agree with Councilwoman Watley. And um I would like to hear what she attempted to start to read.
That's the next. That's on the agenda for mutual aid.
What with the with the combined um.
With this item.
Okay.
It affects it globally, that again, I agree with her as well, but it it's not tied to this item.
Okay, but she was trying to, she was trying to combine them so that it would make.
You can't, it it does not, that's not, that that does not make sense. In this particular setting.
But I thought the person that was just speaking before from the large group said that. He understood it and he he thought it, he agreed with her.
Well, uh uh there are two totally separate uh separate things on the agenda, I just, I understand that. Looking at things in a big picture perspective, it did make sense to me that. And the state is reducing. Uh reducing resources in certain ways, the city looks for resources in other ways. It happens that these projects allow for an increase in city resources, but it is a completely separate agenda item.
Thank you, Mark, yeah, that's that. Uh Commissioner.
I have a question to the large group, this is a Councilwoman Washington, I'm not sure if we. Still ask questions or not.
Yeah, of course, uh let me just make sure that uh Commissioner McDaniels, she was.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, my apologies.
No, no worries, Commissioner McDaniels.
Uh yeah, I guess, I guess, I guess I'm still confused, but I would just, I will continue to listen, I guess I'm I'm still confused.
Yeah, just two separate.
Okay, okay.
Makes sense.
Okay, I'll just listen to the next.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councilwoman Wash.
Um this question uh for for the large group, um in regards, we're doing the pilot. Of ordinance, of course, for the family units, for the senior uh housing. Um since we're not doing the pilot, I guess, in regards to senior housing. Would that mean that there would there would not be any changes in the rental for the seniors, right, one increase?
There's no, the the residents of both projects won't experience, won't be paying anything more than they. Already are based on their incomes, their their payments, their portion of the payment is based only on their income. It will remain that way. Doing this, doing this preservation project. Sure is that, it preserves the affordable housing. Both. There's no, there's no additional, neither sets of residents will be paying anything more. Than they already are for their portion.
Okay, yeah, because that was um a a couple of questions that came to me from the senior, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yep, no problem.
I got a question.
Councilman.
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, we get thirty percent, I I know they pay thirty percent in their rent, am I correct? Okay, and you're saying that we we we're going to, and it's gonna end for taxes, it's gonna be a hundred and forty three, let me ask you a question. If, say, say you had two or three units that's empty each year, would would we still get that hundred and forty three thirty, three hundred and seventy nine dollars?
Uh we, it it it's a product, well, first of all, we try our very best and we, when we make this investment. That we're planning first quarter of next year. Um we we hope to continue to maintain around ninety five percent occupancy. Um at both sites is really. Where they're currently operating, that's where we we hoped even improve upon that. Um but it is based, it is based on the actual, so it is based on the contract rents. It it less the vacancy, that two hundred and fifty eight thousand and that shelter rent that you see there still on the screen. That two hundred and fifty eight thousand nine twenty six is the projection of. What what HUD allows the rents to be. Less vacancy.
Okay, so that just.
And 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 less utilities.
So that's just. Could be less, am I correct?
Is, it is possible that two hundred and fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars is not. It's not an exact, the exact figure, it could be more, um if. It 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 could be more if we increase occupancy more, um it could be less if occupancy is lower. It'll be right around that number. That that's our best estimate at this point.
Okay, so the, so otherwise, there's two hundred and fifty eight thousand. Uh is that the to- the total units, how how is it gonna, can you explain to me how it's gonna grow, if this is what you're saying? You got your growth figure here now of the units that you have?
Uh in terms of growth figures, we, but we're really at the, we're at the discretion of HUD. On allowing us to increase rents. So tho- those rents are assessed every year. By HUD, so generally rents tend to increase by HUD. Um it's called an operating cost adjustment factor, usually it's around one and a half percent. Every year, of course, then utilities tend to increase even more than that every year. So you end up net, this is called the net shelter rent, so it's it's your. You know, your gross, what you could, you could possibly make if you were a hundred percent occupied. And then less your vacancy and then less your utilities. And that's that, that's two fifty eight. And then it's four percent of that of that number, four percent of the two fifty eight would be the pilot. Payment that the family project.
Yeah, that was a really good question, so as it relates to that. What what have you seen as a relation to trend for occupancy there, is it at ninety five percent?
Yeah, we're at ninety five percent, I mean, it's thirty six units, so we generally only have like one unit. One or two that's vacant, and of course, that's just the nature of. You know, apartment rounds.
Okay, Councilman, did you have anything else? Okay, uh Councilman, that I mute the caller, the head of hammer.
Yep, hashtag just tree or just try?
Good evening, everyone. Yep, this is Miss Ed Ruth, we are the first name is Marla. Hello. Hey, I have a question, and my question actually pertains to when we talk about resources. And I like the way the mayor put quality of life, how does this actually improve? Resources, what resources and the quality of life?
So it it, yeah, I I mean, that in terms of resources, well, what we have pulled up on the screen and I can. Reiterate, historically, for both of these properties, the Cherry Hill properties. The city has been receiving approximately fifty two thousand three hundred and eighty one dollars of its share of tax revenue. With the passing of this pilot. Along with the, along with the senior tax exemption on the senior property. City's share would increase over ninety thousand dollars every year. So in terms of additional resources.
And Mark, hold on, let me stop you right there in the head, that just to pick, just making sure that we understand what we're talking about here. That's going to be our bottom line, so as it relates. Increasing our general fund monies to be able to pay for what Councilwoman Watley was, you know, going towards as it relates to our mutual aid. More firefighters and more resources as it relates to paying those individuals, first responders, more money. Um police officers, more money to retain, when to build, you know, sustainable quality of life. Public.
Yes, that's exactly right, would be within the discretion of the city to. Choose, you know, what to do with the ninety one thousand, but ninety one thousand additional dollars every year would come in to the city's general fund. In terms of quality of life, we would be investing. Uh six point five nine million um into both, across both properties. Which is equal to over forty four thousand dollars in hard costs. Per unit, per residential unit.
So that's that's gonna, that's gonna increase property values, so of course. City of Inglewood as it relates to this property values overall in that area are gonna go up.
Yep.
Mr. Does that answer your question?
That actually answers my question, I'm pretty sure that it answers some of our listeners' questions that actually cannot either find. Out of the diagram, or also are wondering what our resource is when it comes to our residents, I hear the young man. Talking about the the financial resources to the city, but how is that dispersed among our citizens? That make our citizens comfortable with the new pilot. New is the the thing that causes the strain. What causes an additional strain and stress to deny anything new coming to our city? It's a lack of information that is broke down that individuals are able to digest.
Correct.
That's why I asked asked the question, I hear what he's saying about the city. Our residents are our city, so what are we doing, and I understood exactly where Councilman Watley was going. Is that we're offering additional services in conjunction with this housing project.
You're welcome, and thank you for bringing that out. All right, then moving right along. Go ahead, Councilman.
I just uh I have a one question now, is is Inglewood Housing Commission going to be a part of this or or not?
No, 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 they're they're not, we don't, we don't seek any resources from them, they're not, they're not.
Okay, now, now number two, uh do you have a waiting list for these units already, or that's something that you're putting together?
We do, um I'll have to get, I mean, it's not, unfortunately, it's not very long right now, but I believe our management company does have a short waiting list.
That's all I have, Mr.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, motion to close public hearing?
So move. Support.
Been moved and properly supported, roll please. Roll call, please, city clerk.
Yes, Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard.
Yes.
The Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Uh six to zero to close uh public hearing.
All right, moving right along, consent agenda.
So move.
For support.
Support.
Moved and properly supported, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
That's six. Six yays and zero nay.
All right, moving right along, motion carries boards and commissions. Anyone, boards and commissions, I do know that we have a couple of vacancies and we are working to fill those. And from the last uh council meeting as it relates to the uh fire and pension board, we did have a couple of um. Uh interest come in, we make sure that we be putting, that we put those forward, what we'll do is um. You know, I want to, it's to the best of our ability, get get people in place by the first of the year. So then, of course, we can start off fresh, uh we know that we have a couple of vacancies, so please look at your, uh any vacancies that you may have. On the next council meeting, we'll have the boards and commissions, but then we'll come back um. Two week, well, actually, four weeks after that, in between as it relates to boards and commissions, taking them off of the the agenda every. All right.
Okay, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, I I believe I mentioned those two, police and fire pension board be uh members leaving. But Barry O'Brien is a representative of the police department, and they've already submitted someone to take his place. So the only one you need to be concerned with would be uh uh Mona and Confise, I mean, they were together. But that's the only one you need to uh um worry about at this point.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I am aware of that, thank you.
Okay.
All right, then moving right into uh previous business, asking that this item be table to further discussion. Your motion, prayer?
You repeat that, Mayor?
Uh for this item to be table uh for further discussion, uh we were talking in orientation session about. Um just making sure that all of the council was able. Uh, for this item to be tabled, uh, for further discussion, uh, we were talking in orientation session about, um, just making sure that all of the council was able to weigh in and, um, David having, um, some more information for you all and to, you know, for you guys to share some more information with him and then bring back a complete document for us to vote on. We're looking to table this item unless you guys want to continue. It's up to you.
Well, so move the table.
There's support. Or the mood and properly supported discussion on that. Hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
And Mayor Protim Howard. Mayor Protim.
Yes.
Uh, votes to table item.
All right, uh, will be tabled until next meeting, guys. Let's go ahead and continue to do your due diligence as it relates to this item, as it relates to council norms. And let's get back on this item next council meeting. All right, moving right into our first reading of, uh, this particular ordinance, ordinance. And this is our first reading, uh, city clerk, if you please, could read it into the record.
Uh, the complete ordinance.
Right here, what you, what you have here on our.
Okay, the council to offer first meeting of the Cherry Hill Family Development Ordinance that pertains to provisions for a service charge in lieu of taxes for housing projects for low income persons and families financed with a federally aided or authority aided mortgage loan or an advance or grant from the authority pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty six. Um, nineteen sixty six P A three forty six as amended M C L one twenty five point one four zero one. Um, the act, the ordinance in its entirety is attached to the package.
All right, this is our first reading. Of course, we want to have any action. Next council meeting, we'll have a second reading. Uh, we will have some more discussion just because it is what it is. We will also to put this full ordinance up on our website. Um, also with the presentation, uh, as it relates to the numbers that were presented tonight, we will circulate that different and, um, do to our best ability, make sure that we get it out to the general public.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yeah, one of the things that used to be done was things of this nature, there would be a copy put at the front desk. Are we still doing that so that people who come in could just read it, not take it, but read the information?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I think, I think Vern is putting it on the, I'll, we'll make sure that we, we, we get it so that it's in the right place. Um, also on our public access channel as well, so we'll be making sure we put that information up. All right, getting into new business, uh, city clerk.
Okay, item A is to consider approval of resolution uh, eleven twenty one two oh nine C O B to commend the cities of Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Wayne and Westland for providing automatic mutual aid for fire response at Cherry Hill Place Apartments on October eighth, two thousand and twenty one.
Which.
Some old, Mr. Chair.
Support.
The mood and properly supported, before we get off into any other discussion, let me have, uh, Chief Hubbard. Please, if you could, just tell us a little bit about this particular resolution as it relates to mutual aid. I know you guys are doing everything possibly can do at the work we have. Um, we could unmute him, please, councilman. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes. Uh, basically, we, 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 we had a, uh, fire in the apartment building up on the sixth floor on that day. And it was one of those days where I had a short shift of employees and they were already out on a call at the time when this fire came in. I responded and arrived simultaneously with Garden City. And, um, the speed and the, the professionalism that these other departments displayed was much appreciated. Uh, this is basically a shout out to them with our auto aid agreement um, on, uh, getting there quickly and giving me some manpower to deal with the situation that was going on at hand. So just wanted to, um, say that, you know, thank you for the auto aid operation that took place that day.
Good. And then also too, I mean, to, of course, to our fire, this job that they're doing what they have. And of course, we know we thin right now, but it would just commend them for all the work that they do. We really appreciate, you know, chief and your efforts and, and leading the department under these circumstances.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments, uh, as it relates to this item from the body?
Mayor?
Go ahead, please, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, me again. Um, I just wanted to say, I understand what you were saying before about this not being, but I just thought it dovetailed really nicely into both projects. And I guess that's why I, I brought it up. So, uh, that was all I had to say.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I told you. All right, anybody else? All right, hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Councilman Williams. Was that a yay or?
She called my name.
Yeah.
I can't hardly hear you, ma'am, clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can make that adjustment.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
That vote is six to zero?
All right, motion carries item B, police city clerk.
Item B is to consider approval to accept bid, a bid from Lutz Roofing to replace the roof on the firehouse.
So move?
Support.
Mood and properly supported discussion? Hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Yes. So Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Again, we have a six to zero vote.
Our motion carries item C, police city clerk.
To consider approval and accepting an alternate bid from Midwest Construction to upgrade restaurants at the firehouse.
So move.
Well, it's work. Okay, the mood and properly supported any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
And Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Again, we have a six zero vote.
All right, motion carries item B.
Is to accept a bid from expert mechanical service to replace H V A C system at the firehouse.
Still moving, too.
Support.
It's been moved and properly ordered discussion? Hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yeah, yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Watley? Councilwoman Watley?
I thought you called me first. I'm sorry. Yes.
We have a six zero vote again.
All right, item E, city clerk.
Item E is to consider approval of a letter of support for the Instrom Triad Project Grant Application for Design Development Grant Funding through the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan.
So move.
The support?
Support.
The mood and properly supported discussion? Hearing none, roll call, police city clerk.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
We have a six zero vote.
All right, motion carries. We're right along on public participation. This brings us to the item in our agenda where it's open to the public. We're asking that you state your name for the record, of course, and, uh, your comments. We asked you to, um, keep it to one minute, of course, be respectful to the body and to the process of the council. Let's see here. Octavia Smith, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councils, residents. Um, again, this is Octavia coming from Western Wayne Family Health Center. Um, just letting you all know that we now, you can call to have your booster shots to set an appointment. You could also call to have your children that's five on to twelve for their shots as well. The phone number is three one three five six one five one zero zero. And you would just listen to the prompts and it will tell you all that you need to know if you're calling for the booster or if you're calling for the vaccination. Um, you can do so there. And don't forget, we have all of your medical needs right here in our city at Western Wayne Family Health Center. Um, and the Chamber of Commerce, we still, um, we are actually in our last day, so if you have not, um, gotten your add in for the calendar, twenty twenty two calendar, you would have to call us as soon as possible at three one three three zero zero one zero five seven. We definitely thank you for all of your support. Thank you.
All right. Oh, boy, that's a good one. All right, moving right, moving right along. Councilman Chisholm, you have, uh, two callers with their hands raised. Um, you want to, I wanted then I can go from there.
These are some unique names, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Well, one disconnected.
Okay.
We, we get Mr. Carlos. I guess we can go with that one. I'm not, for, uh, our public comment reasons that we're going towards, I will not pronounce that last name.
Please, thank you.
Oh, he left too.
All right.
Okay.
All right, no other hea- no other hands, looks like. Okay, Timothy Williams.
Good evening, this is Timothy Williams. Saying that today that the President Biden has signed the, uh, uh, the infrastructure bill. I was wondering with the city being proactive, um, has anyone thought about talking to, uh, our Congress person to see if we can get some of that money to relieve the city from paying that sixty million dollars on, on this infrastructure?
Well, let me say that's a good point you raised there, councilman. And I'm going to say that, uh, our Congresswoman, she been proactive, of course, uh, with Representative Jones, um, Senator Betty Jean Alexander and all the hard work that they're doing. Um, and, and our governor, of course, uh, the city of Inkster already has some projects to shovel ready thanks to, uh, Mr. Bibbins and the D P W, uh, uh, department and the work that they've been doing. So Inkster is primed and, and ready. When they say shovel ready, we've been having these projects together for quite some time now. So, yeah, we're definitely looking at, uh, the monies and resources that, that'll be coming down and Inkster is in a, in a great position to receive those funds. And hopefully we can receive max funding for that.
Okay, Matt, and one more question. Has any of the council members or you, the mayor, have, uh, been involved in any of discussions on, uh, the new drawing of the lines, you know, ev- after the, after every census, they always have a joint of the lines uh, for, for new congresspeople and, uh, state reps and all of that. Has anybody attended those meetings to get any, any kind of information?
Councilman Chisholm, you want to hit this one? Cause I know we talked about it last, last meeting.
Yes, uh, excuse me. Yep, actually, uh, Ms. Norma McDaniel said, actually brought that question up too. Um, cause one, the thirteenth had had a presentation with someone from the state of Michigan and there was an interactive link where they were showing basically, we would be in a new house district, I believe, uh, house district eleven, if the map is that way. And then, of course, there's the other tentative maps that are out there too. Unfortunately, those maps pretty much make us the minority and we're no longer a part of the majority with our votes. But I have been attending and watching closely and been in communication with, uh, Ms. McDaniel's on what's going on, of course, as well as in our office, cause it just couldn't, it's different, um, that everything that would be occurring, state, senate and congressional wise. But I, I have been involved in, in, in Washington and listening to.
Okay, cause I do know that it has not been written in stone yet, but it will happen in December to finalize all those lines. Uh, and I think it's probably also now more important to think about who, uh, we're going to vote or look at, um, put in, put into those offices that, that's going to represent us.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That, uh, former mayor Protim, uh, Williams and, and we're all watching, um, as it relates to that. So know that we're, we're on top. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
We are all watching, but unfortunately, one voice from Inkster doesn't necessarily cut it. We need a, uh, upswell of support from the residents if they're concerned about these lines being, uh, drawn. Every time they have a meeting, they have a Zoom link where anybody can attend. So, I mean, you don't necessarily have to be a representative of the city to attend. And make.
That is correct. Definitely agree. Looked like we had a, a last, and jump in there. You want to recognize, pull out that, state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's, uh, Bill Ratliff, Assistant Police Chief. Uh, just wanted to, uh, chime in this evening on this meeting and talk about the great loss Inkster suffered with the loss of Ms. Toni Bailey. And, uh, I thought long and hard uh, about all of the things that she contributed to the community and the things that she did working with us at the police department. Uh, and all of the, uh, cleanups and, and the, uh, things that we did. And many of those things over the years took place at all the parks in the city, one of them being Westwood Park. And, uh, we had a lot of good times and, and laughed a lot and, uh, really a sad, sad loss for this community. And, uh, I think that it would really, really be a great idea for this council um, to entertain the thought of renaming Westwood Park the Toni Bailey Memorial Park. I think it would be really, really, uh, a fitting honor for somebody that thought so much of our city and did so much to make it better. And I think that those are the people that we need to name things after, the people who have really, really made a difference and she made a difference. Not just as a member of the community, but as, as a personal friend and as someone who worked really hard to, to uh, bridge the community together on so many different things.
So move. Assistant Chief Riley, yes, I, see, I heard, I heard, I heard a member of council say so move. Um, uh, is that something we can jump into right now, um, David? Or do we need to bring it as it relates to an action item?
Yes.
I would probably notice it, Mayor, uh, at a future agenda.
Yeah, yeah, a great thought. Okay, so that's what we'll do. Um, thank you, thank you, A C Riley. And we, we definitely will, see. Hmm, all right, city clerk, what you got for us?
I, I have nothing prepared for today.
All right. All right, and, and, and our treasurer is actually out tonight. He's taking his son back to school. So let's just jump right into it, Mayor and Council. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything tonight except one request.
Ma'am.
I hear you have a pretty fair singing voice. Hello?
Ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Could you sing something for us?
Oh, my goodness, are we still?
No, I heard you, I heard you had a singing voice. I have never heard it, so I was thinking that this might be an opportune time for me to hear it, no?
If it's related to, I guess I will.
If it's related to what?
City, city business. Oh, boy, you're my. Okay.
No? Okay, thank you.
Pressure, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll make sure I make that happen one day. All right.
Okay.
Moving right along. All right, Councilwoman Washington.
Um, I'm sorry, okay, um, yeah, so I just have one thing for tonight in regards to the speed bumps for Middle Park Matter Block Club. Was in contact with Mr. Bivens today. He did break down to that he did send out a letter and he was just waiting for a response from Attorney David Jones in regards to if it will be a liability for the block club to be able to actually install those barriers. So, um, said the block club wanted to know if they could actually purchase, I mean, if they could actually build the installation and material costs and reimbursement. So I just wanted to put that out there because they, you know, wanna actually, you know, try to make sure they get it done before this it snows too much and there's too much snow on the ground.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm not sure if Attorney David, David Jones could actually speak to that or not.
Yeah, he did respond to that, David.
Yes, I, I'm not sure if you got my email, Member Washington, but, but I did respond to your email and address that issue.
Yeah, no, so that, that was addressing them installing it themselves. The question.
Well, yeah, the, it, I thought that the secondary issue was whether or not the city could accept the donation from one or more of the block clubs to install after the city purchased it. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, pretty much them being billed as a reimbursement. Are we, are we saying the same thing?
Yes, so, so what, what my correspondence ended off was is we just need to confer with our city treasurer and I copied him on the email that the city is in the position to accept donations, because we have to have a certain designation from the IRS. And as long as that's, that's the case, we should be able to accomplish that. So he's not here today, but I did copy him on the correspondence.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. I'll get in contact with you sometime tomorrow or something. I'll follow up with the block club. I appreciate you answering that for me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Wash.
Before you can, before you continue, it's on this, it's on the block club thing that she's talking about. Is it possible I could say something at that? Because I've been in touch with a couple of block club members and I thought the last, when I talked to Mr. Bivens, was the fact that they can donate or designate, you know, things of that nature. They're just offering to pay for it. They want the thing, the actual thing done. Now, if it has something to do with IRS or something of that nature, that's what should be explained to them because they don't understand the holdup, or at least that's what I'm getting from the people that are calling me. So they wanna pay for it. They don't, if you.
I understand that, Member Wiley, that, that was the, the final piece that I was addressing with Member Washington, that as long as the city's legal entity allows us to accept donations, which I believe we are, but we just want confirmation from the treasurer, then they can pay for it. They can write a check and the city can accept it as a donation to pay for it.
Okay, so there is no holdup. Until you, you, you have to find out that information, but you're not.
Let me say this, that I've already talked to the treasurer, we can accept donations. We do know, we do know that. We're just making sure, again, that because number one, the city has a responsibility to the state of Michigan. We're in charge of the local streets. Of course, you have the county. But we wanna make sure that, you know, of course, with the liability, who's ever paying, so they're paying for it, the block club's paying for it. We wanna make sure that we cross all of our Ts and dot our Is. So just making sure that that designation, what line item we need to put that money in. And then, you know, to get, we already have pretty much everything, you know, lined up as it relates to the cost comparison or how much it's gonna cost to install permanent ones and ones that you can remove. So Mr. Bivens is spearheading all that. He wanted to make sure that we had all of this checked off. Bivens is on the line to speak to that if, if we need him to.
Okay, I'm fine, just as long as, you know, they're getting the speed bumps, because there's been a lot of things in the paper lately about cup areas that need these and don't get them. I mean, that little girl in Dearborn died last week as a result of it. So I'm just making sure that we're doing our due diligence and we're moving at a pace that's going to be efficient and effective for the citizens over there, because I believe they've been complaining about this for, for over a year. And maybe we need to get into a situation where we can list, because I know people dedicate things to the city all the time and pay for it, like statues and whatever and whatever. And I really can't see the difference between this and that, other than this will save lives.
Yeah, good point. Top of it, we're on top of, we'll have a resolve by then. I've been talking directly to the care persons over there, to Councilwoman Washington and Councilwoman Wiley, so we're definitely on top of it. Councilwoman Washington, did you have anything else?
Um, I do not have anything for tonight. I had a, a issue in regards to some water bills, but I'll actually wait. The treasurer is not here tonight, correct?
No, he's not on the line, but you can email.
Yeah, I'll email him. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, then. Councilman Shaw.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, I just got a couple of things real quick. The basketball court over on Incester Road. I know we just put some signs up with the no trespassing, but the gates are open over there. If we can have someone go over there to, you know, close those gates up and lock them up so no one gets into there and start tearing up anything. And also, at, at the old library, there, I guess it must have been Augusta wind that came and knocked over a tree. I don't know if you saw that over there, but it's it is almost hit the roof of the, of the old library.
Okay.
So it's, it's all over that, that portion over there. And also, are we still on track for the trash deal or I guess R and P coming in or I think it was on the seventeenth or something like that? So is that still on, on schedule?
Yes, we are. And as you, as you know, that we, we, we merged with Easter Housing just because, you know, in our findings, you know, Easter Housing has like three trash contractors. And we were getting calls as a relation to, you know, of course, the trash being out. So they merged with us. So Mr. Bivens is on the line tonight to speak on that, but we're definitely on, on track.
Yeah, because he, he did send out, he did send out an email that they was gonna be, you know, convening on the seventeenth. So I just wanna make sure that we're still on target for that.
Yes, sir, we are.
And also, I, 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 you know, I know we talking, we've been talking about, you know, the resources and, and the various things that we do need in the city and I was you know, I don't wanna talk about, you know, that millage anymore, but, you know, that would have been a great thing for our public safety was concerned, you know, so that we can all, as a community.
Pride too, but the millage, we just, you know, we're maxed out.
I know, I know, I know. I mean, I, I understand it and I understood it then. But in, in that same, in that same breath, Mr. Chair, are we looking at any grant writers to come in permanently to help the city to, to write some grants for us?
Yeah, let, let me say, let me say this emphatically, yes, we are, as it relates to making sure that we have the right grant writer in place, also working with the bomber group to have them cover the cost for us as, for a grant writer. And it, it, we're looking at all of the possibilities, because what bomber is saying to us is that they'll pay for us a person, a person or company for three years, up to seventy thousand dollars. So I'm figuring out right now, you know, what's the best solution? And to be able to present to bomber and then for them to say yes or no, however they're gonna, you know, proceed, but we know that it's a lot of money out there right now. And what we don't wanna do, have anybody doing grants for us. And, you know, we need proven people at the table at this point. And we, we've narrowed it down to two options. We have a company called Keller out of DC that, that they're a group of lobbyists and grant writers that's been very successful across the country and getting communities just like us monies. So those options are coming. I know that you were actually here in my office when we were talking to Mr. Keller about that option. So we're, we're narrowing it down right now, but we wanna make sure that as much as we possibly can, that we're not burdening our taxpayers here in the city of Incester.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, and that's, that's something that, you know, we, we definitely have to even more entertain and bring out to the, to the council as well, that we need, you know, these grant writers, we need these lobbyists that's going to bring home, home the bacon. I mean,
That's right.
lobbyist groups that's not bringing home the bacon. And we, we do need the bacon. We, we already have two appointees, state appointees right here on council and they're bringing home what the, you know, what the lobbyist groups are charging us for. So, you know, they are, they are great tools and also members of the council. So we definitely need something like that so we can bring home more of the bacon, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Also, my last point is, uh, Road Patrol, Road Patrol on Woodland Street, please, sir. I appreciate, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. All right, Councilman Williams?
No remorse, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving right along, Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things really quickly. What's the last day for yard waste collection?
Mr. Bivens?
There we go.
Today.
Today. Okay, well, I guess better late than never, right? Thank you.
Right.
Moving right along, I just wanted to ask Mr. Mayor and Tracy and Jenis to.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me back up, back up. Did, did you say curbside collection for yard waste, right? Okay, Mr. Bivens, not to, not to, unless something has changed, I'm looking at my calendar. Unless something has changed, it says April the fifth, twenty twenty-one to December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. So unless something has changed, Mr. Bivens, can you tell me why you say today?
Because in the contract, it says to December fifteenth. I didn't see in the calendar.
At December, yeah.
December fifteenth.
Mr. Bivens.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry. Oh, I weigh off. It's December fifteenth.
While we're here working together, Mr. Bivens, it's all right.
Thank you.
All right, good, we clarified.
All right, well, thank you, December fifteenth. Okay, great. I just wanted to ask Mr. Mayor and Tracy Ann, and of course, I had CC safe on it as well. I emailed you all the correspondence in regards to some supplemental funding from the state. So at your earliest convenience, if you could just take a look at that email and just respond to it, it's very brief. It's just a couple of questions.
Yeah, I asked, that's the one you referred to?
Say that again.
Is that the one you referred to, the one you sent in today? Is that, is that actually, Rep. Jones? Yep, yep, we got it. We gonna make sure that we on top of it.
Okay, cool. And then I know too, with the populations changing and shifting and stuff like that, that's one of the whole reasons that after the census, the redistricting situations come up with the state, the senate, and the congressional. And I was just wondering, was there anything that we all would be interested in looking at is possibly redistricting the city itself with regards to numbers? It's just a, just our question.
I mean, that's, that's a good question. I mean, is that question towards, you know, what's happening right now as it relates to redistricting? Because we know that we're in the majority right now. Is that what you said?
Yeah, or just as far as city-wise, as it goes with the districts we represent, because of course, within our city, it shifts too. And not saying that nobody's carrying their weight, but because we're redistricting, so everything is a little bit more equal and things of that nature, I'm just putting that out there. I was gonna remind the treasurer, but I'll send him an email, because I sent one maybe about a month ago, and it was about ten questions on there in regards to the check registry. He did answer some of them. He said he was doing some research on further questions, but he hadn't got back to me just yet. So I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder. And as far as.
He told, he just texted me, said he is on the call, so he did hear that. So.
Okay.
He didn't just, he dropped his son off and got back to us, so. So we'll make sure that we follow up with you on that.
Right. And then the robocall policy, I had submitted that, I know the attorney came back with only like one or two minor suggestions that I was fine with. So I just wanted to either, one, ask the administration where they were in reviewing it before it comes to council, or if they got to that point yet of reviewing it.
Yeah, we, we have reviewed it. I had just a couple of things I wanted to add to it. And then, of course, you know, just the cost. And, you know, there is a cost associated with it and where that cost comes from and then, you know, how often what we would use it for. You pretty much outlined all that stuff, so we just wanted to make sure that we tighten that up a little bit more, so definitely.
That sounds good. Also, I wanted to just ask, as far as, we haven't gotten a monthly report in some time, and I know you all know, one of my pastimes is information technology, also known as IT. So I was gonna ask if we could get a PowerPoint presentation of year-to-date progress from the IT group of what they've been doing. Basically, you know, before and after. And make sure that includes the status of where one, two, three net is with testing, tuning up, and getting us connected to a more stable and higher-speed internet capabilities.
You, you still in all of my announcements, so let me just say this, that IT, of course, on the twentieth, just because their contract is up as well, and with one, two, three net. So both of them will be here together. For the, the council, so we're already prepared for that. And as it relates to just, um, the, the, the package, so I know that's some big information I want you guys to have. And as I'm going through it, I just wanna make sure it's up to the standard that you want it, you know. You know, as a councilperson, I know having that information is key. I want you to know what's going on, what's going on in the different departments. So, you know, we're just, we're just working to tighten that up a little bit. You'll see it's forthcoming. It'll be, it'll be coming here, so. There's had a lot of other things that's just been on our desk in relation to priorities here in the organization, but we will make sure we get those to you.
Great. Well, my final thing is from the Incester Chamber of Commerce. Dr. Delany had been talking to me and I had actually connected her prior to the passing of Toni Bailey. I connected her with Toni Bailey because she wanted to do this can the trash, or the Chamber of Commerce wanted to do this can, can the trash initiative, if you will, to help in assisting with cleaning up the city. And it's an effort to clean up the city by having trash containers available to put trash in at businesses or residential areas. And I did, you know, inform her like, what a thing about initiatives as such. A little process should go in place with trying to find out, well, who would empty these trash cans and things of that nature and where would they be stored and so on and so forth. However, they, the Chamber of Commerce is looking at trying to assist in keeping the city clean and everybody doing their part in cleaning up the city and not just waiting till a quarterly or bi-monthly cleanup occurs. If you see something, pick it up, throw it away. If the trash cans are overflowing, call somebody or empty it yourself if you can to help stop stuff just from flying up and down the street and then complaining at a city council meeting. And now I'm, I'm paraphrasing and this is coming from me. When I say complaining at a city council meeting about how dirty the city looks and everything like that, when we see our usual few taking the time out of their own day and own lives to pick up trash all along Michigan Avenue, Incester, Middle Belt and all throughout the neighborhoods and doing their. Taking the time out of their own day and own lives to pick up trash all along Michigan Avenue, Inx Road, Middle Belt and all throughout the neighborhoods and doing their part. We should join in with them and make it a citywide continued effort and express and show. What, 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 one of my church members said this to me, set precedence by leading with example. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Well said, young man. All right, moving right along. Mayor Procton Howard.
Um, I just wanna ask, are we still on for December sixth Bar Finance, uh, meeting with Plant Moran?
No doubt about it, the state is gonna be on as well. So I have the state of Michigan that's gonna be on. Um, with Eric and Larry, along with, uh, Plant Moran and the treasurer, of course, is gonna be leading the discussion. And, uh, Plant Moran is, uh, uh, joining us to lay out. Things that we're doing, we're in the middle of the audit right now, so we definitely, uh, will be bringing that information with, uh, our budget. Um, year-to-date where we're at, also to, um, amendments for our budget as it relates to, uh, the quarters as we go into our quarters.
Okay, is there anywhere possible that the council can get a copy of all of that prior to the meeting?
Yes, ma'am, we'll definitely make that happen. Let's see here, you talking about, uh.
The slides that maybe Plant Moran usually gives us, slides on, uh, different, uh, on all the, uh.
But I apologize, I was just looking at the dates over here, I'm sorry, cuz we're at the fifteenth now, so I'll, I'll talk with them and, and see where they're at with, uh. Cuz they were gonna be prepared to do it tonight, but I know Brian wasn't available, so push him to see if we can get it by next Monday. So you guys will have it going into December.
Okay, okay, and, 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 and also just, uh, would like to wish everyone a happy holiday days and a safe one. And that's all I have.
Awesome, all right, moving right along at Thompson Towers and Twin Towers, Council, if you're available. We will be joining forces with, um, um, moms in the city of Inster, um, led by, uh, Tamika Lockard. Moms Against Violence, um, on this Friday. At the Thompson Towers and the Twin Towers simultaneously at eleven o'clock, we'll be preparing food and, uh, giving food away. To our seniors in those particular towers, and of course, the people that live in those towers. We know that the Thompson Towers is a mix. Years and disabled, and then the Twin Towers is, um, uh, awesome. We will be there. If you wanna volunteer, just come on up. We just need you to come, we just need your hands. I'm also too on Sunday at the Recreation Complex in the parking lot. Um, the organization, what's the name of that organization? Does anybody had it? I know, City Clerk, you had mentioned it last week. I know that, um, Ms. Moore is a part of that organization. Is it Easter United?
Unity in the Community.
Unity in the Community, okay. Unity in the Community, they're gonna start at twelve o'clock at the complex, giving out, uh, dinners. Um, Thanksgiving dinners from twelve o'clock until they're gone. Um, and then we're gonna pick up to the best of our ability at two o'clock, uh, giving away dinners as well. Um, Mr. Alan Marketing was, uh, from the Flight Club is providing dinners like he provided last year, so we, we're just staying, standing in your cars. We'll have them packed up and we're gonna give them away. Also too, um, working with anybody on the Cosmotic Body that wanna join forces. And give away turkeys as many as we possibly can. We know that turkeys are scarce. Uh, we're up to about a hundred and seventy-five right now. Um, we have two different organizations that day that'll be giving away turkeys, uh, the Easter Cobras and the, uh, Harrison Market. Is gonna be giving away turkeys that day. They have about a hundred and fifty, that they'll be giving away starting at three o'clock. And then we'll be over at the Easter Recreation Complex at two o'clock giving away dinners and as many turkeys as we have. Uh, anyone from the Cosmotic Body, or anyone in the community, period, know a family that needs turkey. They can't fix the turkey. Um, we wanna make sure that we donate it and then we fix it for them as well. So if you could, please inbox me, call me, text me, so we can make sure that we take care of our people within our community. And lastly, on Thanksgiving Day, um, at the Easter Recreation Complex, along with the Easter Cobras. They're gonna pull out their pits and they're gonna cook about ten to twelve turkeys and we're gonna cut them all down and we're gonna do some sides and all of that stuff. And we're gonna have people just come through and get food in the community. So we're gonna go from, uh, eleven to one. So we're gonna try to start early before the lions come on, even though. Lions are lions, but you know, it's a Thanksgiving tradition, so we'll be in the parking lot, kinda like a tailgating type of, uh, theme and those people that, you know, of course. You know, are not being able to fix Thanksgiving dinner, will actually prepare, um, or to go play for folks that day as well. All right, lastly is closed session. David, I know you had a couple of items.
Yes, we, we, again, we have the Clark Harrington matter and the Blackwell Wimberley matter.
All right, motion to go into closed session. So move, the support.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Mayor Procton Howard.
Yeah, yes.
Um, Councilman Williams. Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
We have a six-zero vote to go into closed session.
All right, then, um, to the general public, we're going into, to closed session. We will be coming back out, um, to, um, dismiss with the general body and any action that we took in closed session if it actually. So the meeting is not quite yet over, uh, we haven't adjourned yet, but we will be going in closed session and coming back out. Troy, I didn't get, okay, thank you. All right, and we're back. For those of you guys decided to stick around with us, we have, uh, one item. And if we could, please. Make ready motion.
I don't know the verbiage, I once, yes.
Oh, I have it.
Read it to the record. He went away. Speak into the mic.
The issue on the table is to accept our city attorney's recommendation. As it pertains to the Clark Harrington matter.
Go move, Mr. Chair. The mood of properly supported roll call, please, City Clerk.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Did I get everybody? Excuse me, it's very late. Can I call Chisholm? Okay, and so the vote is six to zero to accept the city attorney's recommendation.
All right, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All right, the mood of proper support, all say say aye?
Aye.
All right, those who wanna say nay can stay.